We're going to reconvene and I have 6:02.
Yep.
And we need to say the flag salute?
Yes.
Okay. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic or which it stands. One nation with liberty and justice for all. I have nothing to report out of close some time. Take public communication agenda and non-agenda items. Any person wishing to comment on agenda and non-agenda items may do so. Please use that chat option on Zoom and type in your name, residence address, and topic that you would like to speak about. If there are technical difficulties, please email your questions to Please limit your comments to three minutes. California law prohibits the school board from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the board. Per board policy BB 9323, individual speakers may be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The more, excuse me. The board may limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional persons, please speak only if they have something new to add. May I please have, is there anyone that has something to speak to us? No? And we still don't have Vern.
I'm not seeing anything, Mrs. Conforti, so.
So we may go on. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Mr. Bizar?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace? Mr. Wa- Mr. Wallace? Oh.
There's a thumbs up, yeah.
Mr. Snodderly is not there and I vote aye. So it's past 4, 0, 1, not there. Information discussion items. Let me get mine. Recognition of student board member.
Oh, that's Sydney.
Sydney there? Yes. Oh, there you are. Good morning. Good afternoon.
Oh, good afternoon.
Okay, Mr. Phil Pot, would you like to speak to that?
Well, first off, I'd like to say I love that you have, Sydney, that you have persevered to actually make a presentation at several of our Zoom meetings and stuff. And I would love to hear how you're doing, but I will tell you this. What we have actually is, we would like to also recognize you as our as our board member, student board member of this current year. And normally, we would present you physically with a a pad of paper, which is a very leather-bound and pencil and whatnot, very cool with your name on and stuff, as the board member for NCLUSD. We're not able to, we're going to mail that to you. It has been ordered. I just signed the PO today. But we'd love to hear from you, what your experience has been here with us and any suggestions you might have for the future, especially based upon what could be a remote issue in the future.
Um, I think I'm pretty happy with how this year has gone. I think that it's good that I was able to make it to most of the meetings. And a lot of the time, I feel like in the past, that's kind of been an issue because there can be controversy with the scheduling. But I think that's, I think for the upcoming years, well, because they're in leadership right now, they were, when school was in session at school, it was, we were trying to figure out how we were gonna do the elections for the upcoming year's student council members. So I think that they're gonna have to do speeches and whatnot to become a student council member rather than just running and having a campaign. So I think that it'll be this, well, more student body choice of who is in what position, less of just having like one or two options for each position. So I think that'll be beneficial. I hope that for the learning, excuse me, the distance learning, I think that it'll be, it would be beneficial if the student was just in contact with the people who are running the school accounts, which I am thankfully because I'm in leadership. So I think that's important because that way you can have social media as another aspect of our report. Because, for example, if today I was gonna report to you guys about the seniors and some of them, how, which colleges some of them are going to be attending. And I know that based on a new account that we made, which is the OHS seniors. It just has other colleges. We were able to submit the seniors, if you're enrolling in college or whatever your plans are after graduation, you were able to submit what you're doing. And then that way, everybody's kind of in the know with that. So I think that's kind of beneficial.
So Sydney, have you, have you chosen where, what you're gonna do for next year?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna be attending UC Santa Barbara. Hopefully, that is in Santa Barbara and not just online. But yeah, so that's, those are my plans. I don't know exactly what I'm gonna major in yet, but I'm kind of figuring that out. So, yeah, but those are my plans.
So we very much appreciate, you know, your input over the last few months and stuff as a board representative, as a student. And some of the board members may have some questions for you, but I really think you have done a great job. I appreciate the standard that you have set. I think it's gonna be a standard that's gonna be established from now on. Thank you so much.
I hope so too.
Sydney, I'd also like to say, we really appreciate what you've done. You've kept us informed, as to the seniors. And anything that you can think of to help the incoming person that will be a student board member, especially with what's happened, would be very beneficial. So please, if you have, when you have a chance, would you give it to whoever is going to be in such leadership or whatever? But thank you. Really appreciate all your work. And maybe when, if we, when we get back to an official board, you can come and visit us. We can talk in person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, I wanted to add a couple comments. I thought that one of the things that was, from a father's point of view, that was odd, was trying to pick which school we wanted to go to when we no longer could actually go visit them.
Yeah.
And so I just wanted to relate that on, I guess it was three weekends ago. We all got in the car, drove five hours down to Santa Barbara, drove around the campus because you couldn't get out, and then turned around and drove back. And
Wow.
Yeah, it was a lot of driving. And we stopped for a rest break at a Target store and went shopping. Anyway, that was an exciting adventure. And I know that other parents have gone through the same kind of thing. It's an odd year to be picking colleges and deciding what your life's gonna be like for the rest of your life. But as several members have already commented, you know, we'll all get through this. It's a struggle, but it's something we can handle. Anyway, it's been fun watching Sydney pick colleges. And I know a number of her friends have been accepted into nice schools, very nice schools too. We have people going to Cal Poly. We have people going to other US UCs up and down the state. And I'm sure we're gonna all be proud when we look at the list.
Okay. Am I on mute or, okay?
No, you're good.
You're okay, bro. I just wanted to say congratulate.
Whoa.
Am I up? Am I on?
You were, but you faded off there in the middle.
Sydney, if you can hear me at all, I just wanted to say congratulations, okay? This was a very strange year for you and all the other students, but I'm very proud of you and you did a great job.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I think a lot of us are looking forward to college now. So hopefully, we all get to go and stuff, so yeah.
Thank you, Sydney. Um, recognition of NCLUSD 2020 retirees, Anne Schumaker, Mary Beth Rowe, Carol Moore, Mike Beavers, and Gail Dudley.
Well, let me, yeah, I don't know if any of them are actually, I guess I, I mean, I could look, but it would take me a minute to figure that out if they're actually logged in here. But Anne Schumaker has been with us, with us for 16 years. Mary Beth Rowe, 23 years. Carol Moore, 18. Mike Beavers, 34 years. And Gail Dudley, 30 years. That's a, that's a long time. And I will tell you that they have a plaque that we normally give. And what it says to them is, and this is in all honesty, what we absolutely believe in, that is, "In appreciation for your lifelong dedication to education, for believing in students, for guiding through example, for inspiring with passion, for living through loving, for leaving an indelible mark on the future, for touching the human soul, you have made all the difference." And I will tell you that every one of them have made a difference in students. And we're so appreciative of their service for us. The other person that actually is not actually, I think, on the agenda is Lori Machado, who just recently sent her resignation in, which I don't think made it into the board agenda. But she has 35 years of experience in our district as a library media specialist. And, you know, I just want to appreciate all of these folks, Anne and Mary Beth and Carol and Mike and Gail and Lori. Because, you know what? When it comes down to basically why we were able to seamlessly go into remote learning, it was because of people like these. The relationships that they had positively built with our students was a reason why we were able to move seamlessly into remote learning. And so, so appreciate them all and wish them the best in their new endeavors.
Yes. I concur with that and they'll be sadly missed. Mr. Scott, good evening. And I believe we're having a presentation by you.
Yes. Did you want me to share the presentation on Zoom? Or do you have copies of?
I have a copy, but.
I have a copy also.
I think we're all copied.
Okay.
Well, I think maybe we have a Zoom, let me see if I can do that for you, Dale?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Is that the first one there?
Yeah. Is it? Perfect.
There we go. Just caught me occasionally.
Super. Well, let's jump right in and turn to page two. What I wanted to do this evening is take you through the March election and then transition to some ideas as to whether you should proceed and if so, how on the November ballot. Let me start by saying that you were far from alone in failing to succeed in March. Statewide, there has never been an election that was quite so difficult. You can see there were 122 K-14 measures on the ballot. That was far too many. It was an historical, I'll talk a little bit about why that was and why there were so many. But only 36% of those measures passed. That's just startling when you think about it. Now, why, and looking back, why do we think that was such a, you know, a lot of people jumped to a conclusion and say, well, the taxpayers are just, have just had it. You know, it's just too much. And I suspect there was a little bit of that, but I think there were a lot more contributing factors that caused that. The first, and perhaps most important, was that early primary date. That March date, one, caught a lot of people by surprise. On top of that, you will recall, or you may recall, that there was a lot of confusion in the Democratic primary or a lot of unease in the Democratic primary. Who was in, who was out? A number of people were waiting to see what happened in South Carolina on the weekend before. And then also on that weekend before, if you recall, the weekend before the California primary, that was the first time there was a major discussion of the potential problems of COVID-19. That was, you may recall, that was when Tom Hanks announced that his wife were infected. And that produced then a huge, I'm sure you also recall, on the stock market on Monday, a huge drop-off. And then I think the number one issue in my mind, which is not on this page, and it was something that I was worried about from the beginning, is that statewide and in your district as well, a good 30% plus of the voters did not have a presidential candidate at the top of their ballot. That is to say, anybody that was not a registered Democrat or a registered Republican, or if they were independent, they took the, took the action to make sure they got it, they could vote in the Democratic primary. They had a ballot that didn't have a presidential candidate on it. And so I, I, I'm not able to get the data from Stanislaus County yet, but in other counties, we have seen that the, while the Republican and the Democratic turnout was not great, but decent, the decline to state and the independent voter was absolutely rock bottom. I mean, it was in the single digits in many counties. And those voters tend to be supporters of school bonds. They're younger, less likely to vote in a general election, but more likely to vote for a school bond. Turning to the next page, page four. I wanted to go back and look and put this in perspective. Now, this is your historical voter turnout. Let me just say one thing about this table on the left. I'm sorry, the chart on the left. It's unfortunate, but this data reflects people who voted, who are still registered voters in your district. It's just the way the data, so, so for example, in November of 16, the last presidential election, even though we're showing about 3,800 voters voted, in fact, when you go to the county website and look that up, that's more like 4,400. So you had in the last presidential election, and those are people that, for whatever reason, are not on the rolls. Either they passed away, they've moved away, they're just simply not registered voters. And so in the last presidential election and in the last gubernatorial election, the turnout was much higher than you're seeing here. Turnout in your last presidential election, not the primary, but in the last presidential election was close, was over 70% in Stanislaus County. We thought that the turnout, because of the, I think we all thought that the turnout would be much higher because of the enthusiasm we saw in the November 18 gubernatorial race. But it simply didn't materialize. You still have strong demographics for a school bond, 41% Democrat, 29% Republican, but the killer, I think, was that 30% other that simply didn't make it to the polls. If we could, are there any quite, please feel free to raise your hand or or throw something at the screen. If you have any questions as we're going along. This was, I went back and pulled a survey and it's very interesting. You know, you're a very reliable voter. Now, what I, you may not recall, but what I had said, that we had thought that the very reliable and reliable voter would show in March. That clearly didn't happen. Only the most reliable voter voted. And, and that is so fairly, somewhat within the margin of error, it's not close. I mean, you guys didn't crack 50%, but clearly those unreliable voters who will show up in a presidential election did not show up in this primary. If we can turn to page six. Just to return to that poll again, this shows you, we went, you did not see this data when we originally looked at it. This is some of the cross tabs. But I had our analysts look at how the Republican, the decline to state, and the Democratic voter broke down in support of the school bond. And this just plays into the narrative here. The Republican voters, certainly there are Republicans that support the measure, but the vast percentage of the registered Republican voters that participated in the survey were strongly opposed. We had a strong no vote, 55, over 55%, that's the dark red. And that's a flip on the Democrats and to a certain extent, a flip on the decline of state or no party chosen. That also was the case on the next slide of page seven. That was also the case, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't add it and I took the slide out, but I'll just say, that was also the case by age. So if we look at the age of the voter, we find the younger voter to be more supportive and we also find a younger voter to not show up in our primary. The one piece of the puzzle that I think is worth looking at here and thinking about is this tax rate. You know, in a general election, often the tax rate gets, is not as important because a number of people who are showing up in a presidential election are just not as concerned with the overall tax rate. But that older conservative voter is very concerned traditionally. And you can see that when we go up to that $60 tax rate, that's at the bottom. Or even what we say it is a 66 cents per $100. We barely crack 50, 60% on the 6 cents and we barely crack 55% when it's at $60. So there is a lot of resistance to that tax rate, regardless of whether it's $30, 6 cents, $60. So keep that in mind as we go forward. So what I did on page eight, and let's take just a little explanation, and if it's too complicated, please tell me. I'll step back and try it again. What you have on the far left-hand side is the voter turnout in March of 2020 by number of voters. So you can see that the blue are the, first the 48%, yes. That was about 1,200 voters. The no was 52%, that was about 1,300 voters, 1,300. So what I asked our analyst to do was I said, okay, let's assume that those voters in March show up in November, which I think is realistic to assume. Let's assume that that's baked in, that they're not gonna change their votes. Let's go back to the voter turnout in this district in 16, which was 73% in the last presidential election. What percentage of that addition of those new people coming in, how would they have to separate between the yes and the no vote? In other words, how many people that didn't vote that show up in November of 2020 would have to vote yes in order for you to get the equal sign of 55%? Because 55% is our bogey. And the answer is, if you had a 73% turnout and if everybody that voted in March comes back and votes like they did in March, you'd need 63% yes of those additional voters to make it work. So it's a high, it's a high bar. There's no doubt about it. I mean, it's a high bar. Now, those voters, mind you, that show up in a presidential election, that only show up in a presidential election, that's who we're really talking about to a certain extent, they tend to be supporters. But you might say, you know, it would be, it would be less than a slam dunk to pick those 63 up. I mean, that's getting to be a big number. So what I'm gonna suggest, well, actually, let me, before we go to the next step, let me just stop there because that's a lot of data and ask if there are any questions about what I presented so far. Okay? Let's look at what you might do. Yes, sir.
Oh, this is Carolyn. This estimate is at the same $60 per rate, per hundred rate?
Yes. Yes, that is $60.
Thank you.
And I'm not gonna answer the dog's question.
Okay.
Okay, so on page 10, this shows what we were asking voters to vote on in March. We were asking for a $35 million bond with a marginal tax increase of $60 on top of what they are currently paying, which is roughly $128 per $100,000 of assessed valuation. And I think, I think that is a, that may have been just a tough one. Let's look at a different alternative that we might consider for November if you were to go forward. Let's look at page 11. Page 11 would, would, would really skew this differently and bring that marginal tax rate down to zero. So what the ballot would say is, with no increase in the current tax rate, we do approve, in this case, $25.8 million. Now, we have to do some financial engineering to make that all work and make it, be able to obtain the funds in time. But that is a powerful, powerful message to say no increase in the current tax rate. That, by the way, is what Waterford did a few years ago. There are a number of other districts around the state that have done this as well. And, you know, not to be, not to say there's only A or B, if you can go back to slide 10, you could be in somewhere in between. You could bring that $60 down to $40, down to marginal rate of $30. But I think if you feel like, especially where we are today in what is a very difficult period for many people on all sorts of levels, then going back to page 11, slide 11, this, I think, is your safest course. Now, let me just put one small little addendum on this, and I think you'll find this interesting. Right before, right as the virus began to break out in March, we had, as a firm, we had probably a dozen, ten to a dozen voter surveys ready to go across the state for bonds on the November ballot. And I put them all on hold, obviously. You know, we don't, there's no way, what's going on now, that a person, what a person says today, this was in March and April, there's no way they're gonna, we know that, what that means in November. We just don't know where we are. Everything is just so messed up. So we put them on ice. And we just began last week to start releasing some of those polls again. Now, there are not many rays of light in everything that has happened in the last couple of months with the, with the sheltering at home. But one ray of light is that in a voter poll on the telephone, people answered the phone. You have, everybody's at home and everybody's picking up the telephone and wants to talk. So I think we're getting great, great response. But the first one that came in was this weekend. It was for a community college district called West Hills. I'm not sure if you're familiar with it. It's between Bakersfield and Fresno and the Colinga area. The street stretches down into Kings County, very conservative area in the south part of it, which is where we were polling in the Lemoore area. And these results came into me in my mailbox Saturday morning. I thought to myself, this is gonna be terrible. And I was stunned. It was one of the strongest polls I had seen really in months. This was a strongly, strongly Republican district and they were 100% behind, not 100%. They were 70%, 70-plus percent behind this, behind this bond. We changed the survey a little bit because I wanted to measure, and I think this is important, and I'll get off the West Hill story. I wanted to measure, how were people feeling about their community? That's really, and how are they feeling about themselves? That's really, and how are they feeling about themselves? And so I wanted to measure both of those, not just are you for a bond or a not? And so in all of these polls, we're now asking people a question that goes something like this. Thinking about the current virus, do you agree or disagree with this statement? I am proud of how my community reacted to this crisis. That was the question. My theory being if people were proud in their community, they're going to want to invest in their community, continue to support the community. If they were not proud, I didn't know which way it would go. That was overwhelmingly pride. Just an overwhelming, I agree with that statement. We also asked the question, do you agree or disagree with this statement? I'm, I'm concerned about my, my future financial wellbeing. And that was there, you know, it was certainly in the 50% plus range. But it did not affect their response of being in favor of this community college district school bond, which was at a $25 tax rate, by the way. Now we'll have other polls coming in over the next couple of weeks. It'll be interesting to see if that, that replicates. But I wanted to toss that out there. It's not all, you know, I'll just, I'll just go on for just a moment more. If you think back into the big crises that occurred in our lifetimes, recent crises, the first one being 9/11. After 9/11 and after everything sort of began to get put back together, there was a huge resurgence in the national mood. And you may recall, it was a huge level of pride, patriotism of people doing in the military, helping out. That was not so much the case after the mortgage meltdown in 2008. There was, I think, more of a kind of a bitterness after that in the national mood. And so I was curious to see where that was headed. And I think it's headed to former and the latter, at least in the Central Valley. Okay, enough pontificating on my part on that. So that is where the district stands. If we can turn to page. Stanislaus County, as you may know or may recall, is an early county, meaning the deadline for filing comes quick. The filing deadline in this, in your county is July 6th. So if the district wanted to get back on the ballot, and I'm going to talk about the alternatives to that in just a second. We would have to move quickly and bring this to your next board for action and then place it on the ballot with the county by the end of, essentially by the end of June. Now let's talk for just a minute about what your alternatives are if you decided not to proceed, which is certainly a viable alternative. Recall that Prop 39 elections can only be held on a general election date. So that means your next opportunity after the November 2020 would be the June gubernatorial primary in 2022. Probably not a great ballot for you. Followed by the gubernatorial race in November of 22. I also think that was not be a great race for you. This is a, an incumbent Democratic governor. I mean, essentially running against himself seriously, if everything stays the way it is right now. And so we're really looking at your next feasible alternative being November 2024 to get back on the ballot, I think, given the demographics of the district. So with that, I'm going to stop, see if there are any questions and hear comments.
I have a question. Can you hear me? My question would be, I know that some of the comments that I've heard locally have been the taxes. You know, we have tax for this and the tax for that and on and on and on. And that may change as time goes by, but I noticed that you had the May timeline to finalize the project list. So we might need to think about adjusting the project list. So that would have to be done like immediately, right?
Yes.
Like yesterday.
Mr. Scott, when would you be selling bonds? I see that we'd be making payments through 2064 and the first batch would go out in 21, I think your list.
Right, let's, can we go back to the slide, to the presentation? Or if you have it all in front of you, you can just look at, right, page. And look at page 11, please. I mean, again, to be clear, the sale of the bonds is up to you, obviously. I mean, that's, there is no shelf life on how long these bonds can sit before they're sold. It's really when you're ready. We've projected three semi even series of bonds over the course of about a seven to eight year period. With, and you can see that in order to keep a level of tax rate, we would have to have a couple of years where there's either a short term financing to kind of get over that hump or maybe we could capitalize some interest to pay that interest during that period. So you would have access to these bonds as early as the beginning of 2021. That doesn't mean you have to use them in 2021. You sell them when you're ready, but it would be as early as 2021.
So I guess two questions. Part was the, we would be able to access if there was some infrastructure money that came through next year. And then the second question is you're not considering capital appreciation bonds, are you?
No, no. Now, we would consider, under this scenario, we would consider some short term, they're called bond anticipation notes. Or perhaps there would be some capitalized interest to get you over that hump. These are going to be very low interest costs, the current interest rate. And I'm assuming they're going to stay about this rate. The current interest rate is 1, 1 and 1/2% if that. And we would try to minimize it to a couple of years. But no, this does not predicate on any capital appreciation bonds.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Janice, it almost seems that if we can keep it without raising, if you're already paying that, it might be more feasible for the people to accept because they're not, not putting out more money. Of course, they'd be putting out less if we didn't have it at all, but that might be something that could be sold to, to our population, especially thinking of 2024. That's all, to them would be a long way off. Of the projects we need.
I think you're right. And I think it's, it's important to remember that in a presidential, and you've all been through numerous presidential elections. And there's just a lot of noise. There's a lot going on. There's a lot on the ballot. And especially the, the infrequent voter often reads that ballot for the first time. Now this won't be, it'll be the first time in their kitchen if it's, what, if we all vote by mail, not the booth. But they're not going to spend, many of these voters are not going to spend a great deal of time dealing with it. So having that wording in the ballot that says with no increase in current taxes, yes, that makes a big difference to many voters.
So I'd like to weigh in on this a little bit because one is, as board members, you're all are taxpayers. And as a superintendent who lives in the district, I'm a taxpayer as well. And I will tell you that I think that there is some, definitely some. You know, some agreeability that, that going with a, a tax rate that continues on is much more palatable than one that increases. My concern is if we don't do something, we are going to have an issue within a few years of not being able to provide facilities and stuff for, for our students. And that's been, that's been on the docket for, for a long time, actually. So I think this is a, this is a good solution. It's, and I think the other thing that needs to be clearly done is, is one, I think that probably there should be actually a committee, not from our board or not from our district, but a committee that's public, that actually promotes actually this bond election. Because I think that, that it is needed. If, if for some reason we don't have to issue the bonds, if, if for whatever reason COVID-19 ends up being for a long time and we don't have a need for the facilities, we don't have to spend the money. But if you don't have this option and suddenly students start showing up the way we think they've been showing up in the past, we're going to have a tremendous problem at the high school, at some of the schools like Von Renner. And I think that that's, that's something we would be, we'd be difficult if we didn't address this right now. The cost of actually, of us actually, if you want to call it a crapshoot, if you will, to actually try to do a bond issue in November is less than $10,000. I think it's money well spent for us to actually look at this and see what happens. And I think if we carve it out correctly, I think it will be palatable to the constituency. I know I would vote for it even if I wasn't superintendent.
I also think what we've been doing in the community through this unprecedented times has given our community the feeling that we care about them and what's happening. And I think that's part that would help with the climate of our community and possibly voting for this.
I see that, I mean, I'm just going to chime in for a second. I see that statewide. I mean, to a certain extent, school districts are the only functional local government in many communities right now. And the level of public awareness and thankfulness in that is really overwhelming, I think.
I think there's a very real possibility that coming out of COVID, as Superintendent Philpott was talking about, we get an increase in enrollment. I think there could be a lot of people, we've been seeing people move back to the cities. That could come to a screeching halt after COVID.
We have to make a decision right now, if I'm, if I'm correct, Dale. We need to, we may bring this back in, in the first meeting in June. And, you know, I don't know what's going to happen. We may revise and the budget and whatnot. But I think we should bring this back and with serious consideration in June and see what we, see what the answer is.
But it needs to be on the June 8th. We need to make a decision to put it on the ballot. We need to have time to talk about maybe revisiting the project list and different things. So when would we do that?
If you'd like to have a, a special meeting to actually discuss project lists, we can do that prior to then. But I think that, yeah, the June 8th meeting, and there should be actually a vote as to whether or not we move forward with the, with, with a election.
Well, I would be up for it, so.
I'd be in favor of putting it on the agenda for next time. I'm going to be in favor of moving forward with it.
I think we have to almost because to wait till 2024, it's almost like you're over, it's almost too late at a time.
Well, I'm for putting it on that one. I definitely want that to go through and I definitely want to have a bond. But what I'm saying is that I think we should maybe have a special board meeting because we need to talk about it. We have that 10 million less, we have to decide what we're going to do with it and what we're not going to do with it.
And I think we need to prioritize the project. To let that, let our constituency know where we're going.
If I could add, you might also want to just spend some time thinking about the tax rate extension option and whether that feels right for you and not just rush into it. And so I think having a special meeting to discuss, that's a good idea.
Yes.
Thanks, Dale. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Budget update, Caroline? Don't see her. Oh, there you are.
She's there.
Okay, there it goes.
So I've, I've put together a budget update for you to let you know relatively speaking where we are prior to the release of the May revise. Stanislaus County Chief Business Officials have been meeting weekly to discuss new information as we plan for next school year and beyond that. We continue to try and process new information or the lack of clear information as it becomes available. Keep in mind that the May revise will come out and it'll be analyzed and it'll leave us about 15 calendar days to make adjustments prior to the scheduled budget adoption at our June meetings. We've been advised to prepare for several scenarios based on where the funding lands. We've been following guidance for these calculations from FICMAT, School Services and the Stanislaus County Office of Ed. The funding impacts are going to have an impact on the 2021 budget, the cash flow projections and our multi-year projections. So looking at variances that we could see in the cost of living adjustment, we're looking, our best case scenario would be a 2.31% funded COLA. So that would be about $33.4 million. That is the absolute best we could absolutely hope for. So you can see a zero with the, the, the effect of the COLA, the 2% COLA is about 750,000. So then if you take that out, we ran some different scenarios based on recommendations that we're getting from the state and what we're, what we're hearing could materialize. And we're hearing between 20, 10 and 20% reduction. So it could be anywhere from 3.2 million to 6.5 million that will, that will be short in the fall. So we won't know the full effect probably until after the fiscal year starts. So we've been working on showing up our ending balance for this year, showing up our cash flow position and, and looking at what we can take out of the budget going forward before, so we can be in the best position possible going into this. So the next slide, John, can you move the next slide? So I wanted to talk about what deficit spending does to our ending balance and what it does to our financial statements. So in the, in the first year, if you start with zero and you add $100 and you don't spend that, you end up with a balance that carries into the second year and you don't have any, that was one time money, you don't get anymore. But then you've spent the money in year two. You end up with your balance goes back to zero. John, can you go to the third one, please? So what, how that shows up on your financial statement is that you, you show your revenue and your expenditures. The first year it increases your balance by $100. The second year, when you spend it, it shows a negative effect and you see that, that decrease to your fund balance. And people call that deficit spending. It's sometimes, it's not always a bad thing. You had the money there, you just needed to spend it at a different time. There are other types of deficits where you have, where you're ongoing, spending more money than you're taking in. That's, that's a different issue. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands when we talk about deficit spending, is it because of one time resources that you're spending out, such as this year when we spent about $800,000 on projects that we'd had sitting for several years? And so we'll show that as a deficit, but is there another structural deficit that needs to be dealt with as well? So we're, we're working on making sure that the ending balance is as high as we can make it going into this. We will have some cash flow implications because we're probably looking at a June deferral where our June apportionment of about 1.4 million will fall. About 1.4 million will fall into July. And so that that will have an effect on our ending cash. But right now we're looking at about $8 million cash balance. Going into June. So I'm not terribly worried about that yet. But that is something that we'll be watching very, very closely.
So let me let me interrupt for a second. I asked Carolyn to kind of talk about this. Deficit spending a little bit because I think sometimes there's a confusion. I mean, on the, when you hear, when when most people hear the word deficit, they think of something negative. In this case, actually, when it comes to public funding. A lot of times it's amount, it's a matter of actually the timing of when the when the revenue is received and then when it's expended. So in our case, you know, we, you know, example, if we receive something right now. In terms of one time payment, which Brown did a lot of actually over the last few years, which was thankful. He's told told districts, hey, look, I'm giving you one time money and. Probably a good idea not to spend on anything that actually eats, which means basically personnel costs. And but if I give it to you at the end of the year, it's going to go into your. Next year fund balance and it's going to look like you're basically deficit spending the following year. That's kind of what we've been dealing with for the last few years. And what I want to make sure that you understand as as a board is what's kind of continuing to happen. But I will tell you this, based upon your direction. We have been extremely conservative in terms of what we have done budget wise. And so if it wasn't for the significant amount of fund balance that we have, the reserves that we have. We would not be able to. Make it through basically the cash flow issues that Carolyn is talking about in terms of payroll. There's there's a lot of districts in California and some in our county that are on the watch list right now. For not being able to make their payroll because of low balances. We are not anywhere near that area. And we want to continue to be not in that area. But what that means is we're going to have to continue to be careful about what we're spending. What we are committing to and trying to keep it as far away from classrooms as possible. But ultimately, what's going to happen is if the if the cuts are are as basically. Is deep as sometimes the Department of Finance has said, and sometimes Governor Newsom. We will have to cut farther into our budget that will affect basically personnel. We are at this point trying not to fill positions that are vacated. We would look first at actually furloughs prior to actually looking at actually cutting positions. And we are in we are in constant conversations with our negotiation or labor partners, I should say. About kind of what's happening with that that whole issue. So I want to let you know that we are solvent. We are not in any kind of jeopardy of making payroll. Or any kind of expenses in the future. However, we are being very prudent in terms of what we were spending. And so you're not going to hear a lot of a lot of expenses that we're going to say, hey, we need to spend this right now. We're really trying to figure out how not to spend money at this point.
Are there any other questions someone had? Thank you, Mr. Philpott.
Well, I I also want to just compliment Carolyn and her staff for really knock out these numbers. And also the the administration at the sites for basically saying, hey, we don't need to, you know, we can cut back this thing. So I want to tell you, it is a concerted effort across the entire district to. To basically cut back expenses.
We had been looking at this prior to. The COVID situation, we'd already been looking at how we could. Pull back some things. And so having that planning process already rolling. Kind of just made it made it even simpler. And once once March hits. We pretty much stopped spending money on anything that wasn't either essential for providing remote instruction. Or child nutrition or basic maintenance and payroll. And that's really helped. Shore up our cash position as well. Our cash position was never in any kind of jeopardy, but it really reinforced it. And to put us in a better position going going into next year.
Thank you, Mrs. Mendoza. Next, we have an update on the remote learning.
Yeah. So actually, I'm going to, if I can, and I'm not sure I can do this. I may have to ask Joanne or Nancy Fox to help me with this. But we want to call a couple of people in our organization to report out on what's happening in remote learning. I did send out a a new survey within the last week. It's called Thought Exchange. We've got some interesting and some very valuable information from that survey. That talks about basically where we should be going in the future with remote learning. But that doesn't close until tomorrow night at eight PM on Tuesday. And so I won't have any raw, you know, really kind of raw data for you until the end of the week and I will send that to you. But but bottom line is, most people are very happy with what we've been doing on remote learning. And so I like to actually start with, if I can. Lupe Robles. To talk about kind of what her experience has been at the elementary representative, actually of of the elementary's districts and schools and stuff. So Lupe.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I'd like to chime in with what Dale Scott said, as well as the board, that I do agree that. Our community is very happy and they're very, they feel that our district is very strong. So because of those relationships that we have built. We've been very successful as a district and the elementary team, and I can speak for my colleagues that our remote learning is going very well. The communication between students and parents and administration. The monitoring that all the admins, myself and the learning directors do to make sure that all the students are getting what they need. Not just academically, but also as social emotionally. Our counselors are being doing an awesome job with checking in on students, providing the extra. Activities for them to do. We push out information if they don't have the technology, which we only have. Our district's very lucky. We only have a small population of students in the elementary that do not have Wi-Fi. And I know we're waiting for those. But through Class Dojo, they push out through their telephones, whatever means they can. All of our colleagues are working hard from the nurses to yard duties, the cafeteria people. Of course, the instruction, I am proud to say that that's still continuing going on with the. With the platforms that we had put in place before with Class Link and Securely and everything, we had the leading edge on. What our students needed. And with that, we're able to communicate, bringing in Zoom and teachers doing Zoom check-ins, doing Zoom lessons. We continue with our PLCs. I know with my colleagues, they've had meetings where we're doing. You know, the instruction PLC for the teachers. What does that look like? What do we meet? Special ed as well, them doing our check-ins. The emotional piece, I think it's been the biggest undertaking, but I think that we're listening to our parents. We're listening to what's going on. We pushed back, we pulled back a little bit where we have no tech days, like at Barrington, it's Fridays, there's no tech. That doesn't mean there's no instruction going on. What that means is instead of being, of course, it's optional because we get parents who who still want their kids to be on there. But going outside and counting blocks or count or drawing some of the pictures that have been shared as they're baking with their families. One of the big topics is that the social emotional dynamics of a family environment are really being impacted right now. So with that, our colleagues kind of talked it through and we decided, you know what, it's okay not to be glued to the to technology for one day or an hour or whatever they may be. It may look differently in each of our sites, but it's something that we listen to our parents and we listen to their families and our kids as well. We don't want to hear that the dynamics of the family are being impacted. And I think for that reason. It has been successful. Colleagues that I hear, we have a librarian who compared us to other sites and their families. And she said that, you know, some of us and board members, you've heard this as well. They're barely starting with the remote learning and we're already on our seventh week. To be able to do that, it's amazing. And that gratitude goes because of what you guys put in place, Mr. Philpott, Kim Benton Court, Rosie. I mean, I feel like an Emmy Grammy presenter just thanking everybody with what we've done, but we continue to go strong. And I do believe that our parents are very appreciative of that. Any questions or anything I can answer for you guys?
Lupe, do you mind do you mind talking a little bit about? The pickup process and stuff in terms of, I know that. You've actually put something out for parents to come back and pick up personal products and stuff that kids have actually produced. How's that going to work?
Absolutely. So right now, with at all at all the sites, if Chromebooks get broken or anything like that, we make arrangements to have someone at the site and we do that. That basic exchange for the end of the year, every site has developed a plan on how that's going to, how that's going to lay out. And unfortunately, with the with the speed of everything that our students had to leave so abruptly, some of their personal belongings were left behind. So every each one of our elementaries have developed a plan where they're going to pack that the the students. Personal belongings. And then they will arrange a time where they will pick up the personal belongings as well as have the option to. Turn in their Chromebooks or they get to take, keep their Chromebooks over the summer, just in case. That will be an option that they will have. Because there are families that feel that their kids could benefit from having the devices over the summer. So we want to offer that. We do want to, they'll do a quick check on them. So we're going to do a visual check where all the media clerks will be involved in it. And we'll probably bring in some of our prayer professionals. They've been dying to come and help out or yard duties. We have, everyone has a list of those that want to come and help and will develop a plan to do that. Most sites too, because our families are missing our teachers and our staff. And vice versa, they will do some type of appreciation where there's a little, they're thinking of certificates, they're thinking a little good advice. Prices or things that they can put in those little personal bags. So we have libraries, library books to collect. We have instruments still to collect and all of that. And that's all being put in motion and every each one of my colleagues has a plan in place on how we're going to be able to do that.
Thank you. And I know that one of the things we've talked about is. Is maybe kind of surveying parents as they come in for that drop off as to whether or not they would want to participate. Their kids want to participate in summer school. It looks different than than the way it looks right now. And so I really appreciate everything that you you are doing and all of our principals are doing at the elementary level. Are there any questions from the board or anybody else regarding what's happening at the elementary level?
What seems the most prominent question that we're getting from the parents?
Besides, when can they their kids come home or come back to school? Right. Actually, it they've been very, I think it's more what is what will it look like next year? There are, they are so hesitant that they're they're very. They're hoping they're going to be able to go back to work themselves. But I think that's the biggest question is, when will school open? And with Governor Newsom's, when he stated that schools may be starting in July, what will that look like? That kind of gave them a little bit of a scare. So I think that's the major. And then one thing is, will my son or daughter be retained? You know, how does this affect them? Those are some of the questions that have been coming. So we've been filtering those and reassuring them. We have a plan in place for grades as well. As are my colleagues at the upper grade. So I think those may be the the number one concerns. Thank you.
Yeah, my concern was with grading. I don't know if you can hear me or not. And how how close are the teachers keeping to the standards? Are we on track? I mean, we deal with remote learning and and grades and report cards and all that.
I have to say, share that the those teachers that those that we can communicate with students, whether it's via Class Dojo on a phone call. We are attempting to address the standards, but honestly, we can't get to everybody. But the the major, the major focus that we're doing is making sure that those standards that we address in the beginning of the school year, we continue to reinforce. And those were the foundationals that we needed to make sure if we continue and we successfully bring those back constantly and give reinforcement. I mean, we have Zern, we have Stride, we have all of these independent. Platforms that the students can use in order for them themselves to increase. Honestly, we've had some students that in the classroom, they were not successful. They are being very successful now. They're moving from Lexi levels. From, you know, a 2.2 to a 3.5 to a 4.5. And when they were in our school environment, the classroom, that just wasn't for them. So we're seeing a little bit of everything, but the majority of it could be that. Although we may not be addressing every single standard from here to the end of the school year. We are, everyone's at a different place and teachers are doing an amazing job with contacting, contacting them, doing either little teaching videos of themselves. To be able to support their their students.
Okay, good. Thanks.
You know, I think that one other thing that's kind of interesting of what we have found and and I know in conversations with Linda Jordan. And also with Ray McNulty, and I know Lupe, you've been in these conversations as well. That the, you know, the number of standards actually that we teach in California, there's way too many of them. And I think what's what we're doing is is what's happening is as a result of kind of this remote learning. And the urgency of of getting things done, if you will. Remotely is that people are really zoning in on basically what the essential standards truly are. And I think we're doing a better job of that. Not that we can't still improve on some kids maybe that are not. You know, have accessibility to to instructional needs. But but I got to tell you, I think that I'm pretty impressed with, for the most part, a lot of the response. And again, this came out of Thought Exchange. Is it many of our parents are saying, a lot of our kids are actually doing better, actually at this point and stuff. And I'm not sure that would be, you know, for the entire year, but they're doing better right now. Lupe, do you have anything else you want to add as a summary?
No, I just, I have to agree with you. One of the other concerns is probably the social emotional piece of it. But because we have put Suite 360 in place and everything, we are able to address that. I'm very, I'm also very impressed and proud of the team that we have.
A question from somebody, please.
Yeah, my question was really more about how the students are are achieving academically. And it sounds like. It sounds like you've addressed that somewhat. Will we be taking advantage of this really weirdness to retain some kids that we normally would advance? Because it's going to do them some social emotional damage. And because we're coming out of such a weirdity. I've always been worried about the kids who don't stand, you know, they maybe they're a fourth grader and they've really only done two or three years worth of expected progress. And then we're going to expect them to make that up before they hit middle school. It just seems cruel. But I understand not having a kid who's, you know. Developmentally too far ahead, but will this give us an opportunity to retain some of those kids, give them another chance?
So, Mr. Wallace, I just want to answer this as a as a across the board. And that is this, you know. Retention actually historically and and data data wise has been dismal in terms of the results, actually. When you retain a student at any grade level other than above basically first grade. The the result has not. the, the result has not been positive. But I will tell, I will tell you this, I think what is happening out of this is that people are starting to understand that developmentally and also in terms of actually mastering skills and, and, and standards, that doesn't happen for every student at every given time. So there's a difference, a difference, if you will, between saying that a student actually should be retained and a student saying they just have not mastered that standard. And I think that's an important dichotomy, an important, you know, analogy that needs to be, needs to be made. Because when you identify a kid as being saying you need to be retained, I, I sincerely believe from every data that I've seen, every, my experience in over the last 30 years is that is not a good thing, identifying somebody who's been retained. However, saying that we're going to give you more time to develop that mastery of that particular skill that we think is important, that actually comes out a positive thing. So I think that's what we're learning from this is it, is that kids learn at a different level. We always kind of known that in a sen- in a sense, but I think that probably what's going to happen out of this, if, if, if I have my drut, is that education is going to change dramatically, to the point where basically there is no differentiation between grade levels based upon age, it's going to be based upon basically their abilities and their functionality. And I gotta tell you, there are some kids who are going to excel in math, but not excel in English. There's some kids are going to excel because of science, but not in social science. So I think, I think there's a lot of positives that could come out of this if we are allowed to do so by our legislators in the state of California.
And there's going to be a cultural piece of that where we allow, where we encourage our culture to embrace that and not, not hold students back. You know, it's one of the things that, that we're seeing now is we've got some students that are running ahead and we're going to have to embrace that as a culture coming back. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, thanks Lupe. Let's, if we, if we can, unless there's any more questions for Ms. Rubles, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Pruitt. I think he's online right now. There he is. And can you explain, if you don't mind speaking on behalf of secondary?
Was there a question, Janice?
Yes, I get my, I can hear you, but you probably cannot see me. It said something about my internet is unstable. So I'll keep listening, but I'm doing it by phantom.
No problem.
I'll try calling back.
That's what happened to me too. It said it was unstable and I had to move around, but I've got it back.
Yeah.
I'm glad we're remote with all these unstable people.
Well, I know, on the move.
So when I, when I think of remote learning and I look at the decisions that we made five, six, seven years ago, going one to one before other districts were even thinking about it, Canvas, our LMS, which is the Learning Management System, and Parent Square, and then the adoption of the Rigor, Relevance and Relationships Framework and focusing on relationships first, that actually put us in a place where we actually transitioned into the remote learning very smoothly. Our teachers were used to taking risks at the secondary level, and I know for the elementary too, but we had, we already had teachers making their own YouTube videos, kind of reverse teaching where they would watch videos for homework and come to class and do their work. We had teachers experimenting with that. During this time, we also have teachers doing the Canvas conference. They can actually conference within Canvas and it kind of works as a different function than the Zoom meeting because they can record that, the students can come back to it. So some of the programs we bought have been very productive and actually adapted to this time for us as well. We, as an admin team, have been Zoom meeting with all of our departments. I think every week we've kind of rotated through, meeting with the departments and discussing with them, finding out what their needs are and talking about the social emotional. We always check in with its, with the teachers to find out which students have kind of dropped off, which ones have stopped communicating, stopped turning in work. And then we refer those right away to someone on our admin team, the learning directors, of someone that has a contact with that student, and then we reach out to that student to, to find out what's going on. So, so again, if they kind of, if they drop off, we, we kind of reach out and go after them and we've been doing that. Really, the feedback I'm getting from parents is, it's been very positive. I think they realize because they're with their child, how much, how much they're expected to do for seven to eight periods in, in a school day. So it's been positive, it's been, I haven't really gotten any negative feedback from the parents. When, when I do, it's usually because the spam filter blocked an email to a teacher and that they say, how come this teacher won't respond? I tell the teacher, the teacher responds right away. It, it kind of gets blocked by our spam filter, but we take care of that. Chromebook issues, as soon as Ms. Machado knows, she meets the student in the drive thru, she has, she hands it through the window and gets the old one back and goes and takes it back to the library, sanitizes it and takes care of it that way. So the students are never down for longer than even 24 hours if their Chromebook goes down. We've been really right on it. One of the, one of the tough things, and this kind of moves into the graduation and senior activities is the closer we get to that date, the more it seems like it may not happen. So we're trying to look at ways to honor our graduates in a way that is deserving to them, but also is the most that we can do for them. So we looked at Jostens, they actually offer a virtual graduation. And, and in the end of it, it could be a parade where they come and pick up their diplomas if that's allowed. So we have to find out if by the time we get to that time, what's going to be allowed. We met with all of our senior class advisors today, our senior class officers, to kind of ask them what they want. Of course, they want to hold out for that full stadium graduation. So we just basically said, you need to check with your classmates on what they, kind of what they would want to do if we do a virtual, or if we had a ceremony in the stadium with no spectators and then live broadcast everything. So they're kind of looking at some different ideas. They're going to come back and share some of their ideas with us on June 1st and then we'll make a decision at that point. That was a lot. So I don't know if you had any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
Justin, since you're representing the eighth grade class too, are we feeling that they're ready to move in to high school? Because that's always kind of been a, an issue for some of the students before.
You know, we can always do some small group tours and just kind of do it by alphabet. You know, we usually have a warrior roundup day where they all come in, but if we have to break that up in a number of days, just depending on what we're going to be allowed to do in August. But we had a day set up for the eighth graders to come over, get to know the campus, see where their classrooms are, that sort of thing. So if we need to adjust it as time goes on, but really to make that decision right now, I, I think that we might sell them a little short because obviously we'd like to have more people there if we can, so.
But I mean academically, everything's.
Oh, academically.
Yes, yes.
You know, I, I, I'm assuming that Yolo's having the same experience that we are, they have all the same resources. And, and, and again, reaching out with those eighth graders, I'm sure they're disappointed that they don't get to have their graduation ceremony. I know Eva's looking at some virtual graduation options as well. I, I see what our kids are doing and I, I don't see any reason why those students wouldn't be ready to go. And again, what we're finding out is those students that were, were great students in the classroom, they've continued. They really have. Some students have, and then the students that teachers usually had to negotiate with to get work done in class, those students have been a little bit tougher because you don't see them every day or every other day. So that's why we have the admin reaching out to them and different check ons for them, check ins for them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have more questions? Paul?
Yeah, Justin, are you seeing kids take more advantage of concurrent kind of performance? And do you think that that's going to be something you'll see come fall? If we're, if we're, we're going to have a bunch of kids distance learning in the fall.
Are you assuming like the credit recovery?
No, like enrolling in junior college or enrolling at Notre Dame in their chemistry class or something.
You know, I know, I know my daughter is taking advantage of that. She just finished one MJC class and she enrolled in one for the summer. So I know that she is, but I don't know that a lot are really running to that. I think, I really do think the things we have in place right now with, with kind of all the technology that I mentioned earlier, we were really set for this and, and the, and the learning continues. Our infrastructure was well in place, you know, three, four years ago to do exactly what we're doing now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, President Conforti, if I can, actually, there's one more person if we, I think Kim Benton Court is here somewhere. If we can ask her to kind of speak quickly on how things are going with our special ed kids and overall at-risk kids.
Like IEPs? Yes. Like the IEPs that need to be done at a certain time.
Well, they're being done, they're being done. That's, that's a minor thing. I, the IEPs are a minor thing. I'm more concerned about how are we serving our, our specialty kids? So I think Kim is here. Let me just see if I can find her.
Kim has been promoted to a panelist and she should be able to speak.
Okay. Has been Court?
I'm unmuted, so, oh, there I am. Okay, hi, good evening, everyone. Hi, we have been working diligently with our special ed teachers to ensure that our special ed students are getting their needs met along with our general education students. So all of our special ed teachers are checking in with their students daily, most of them. If they need help with an assignment that's been assigned by the general education teacher, especially at the secondary level, they, they'll zoom in with the kids or they'll talk with them over the phone. They're also getting support. A lot of our kids were receiving educationally related mental health. They are getting those calls and supports from either a psychologist or mental health clinician as needed. And they're also participating in some Zoom meetings. We're continuing with IEPs. We're trying to do all of our initials where they're all, the principals have been doing a great job with that and so have our program specialists and our resource teachers. So it's actually gone very smoothly. I would say it's the one area where I feel we're getting information out and little bit of, it's dripping out where they're not quite sure how, how special ed is going to, what is going to look like when we go back, how we make up this time or do we make up this time? So we're going to have to be continually checking in with the state and figuring out legally what our responsibilities are to our kids. But I, I know for, our teachers are doing a great job supporting these kids along with the general education teachers. And we're documenting everything. We are logging and documenting everything. From day one, we've been doing that and the principals review those logs, I look at those logs, program specialists look at those logs. So we've been, and we've gotten really good feedback too from some of our parents on the support that specialized kids are getting. They were calling so much that some parents told them, you don't need to call every day. We're good. So they've really appreciated the support. So they've kind of now worked out a balance and, and, and we're, we're, they seem to be moving right along with their kids.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mrs. Benton Court?
Um, I'm just curious, are we finding some services that our special ed kids need that we're not able to provide? I'm trying to wrap my brain around what we do for these kids and whether we're able to do it all remotely or what we're not able to do remotely.
So we have a, a small number of students who receive OT services, occupational services, not a very large number. And the county did go ahead and say, it took maybe two weeks and they got it, they, you know, everything just was a little bit of a lag, but they basically said, okay, we're ready to go out and do OT. It's, we have to be careful though because they would go to the homes and we can only go to the homes if the parents want us to go to the homes. So that was offered, doesn't necessarily mean parents took advantage of it, but it was offered. Speech, the therapist, the speech therapists are actually making phone contact with, and they put up a weekly list of activities that parents can do at home with their students. So they're still getting support with speech. And we're also offering support with behaviors. Our behaviors will actually, I know for a fact, she actually did a meeting, Casey Clifton had a meeting with one of our parents, literally an hour on the phone, talking her through some, some way she can support a student that has some attention issues. So as, when there's a need, we try to, we try to figure out who's the best person to meet that need and we connect the family or the student with that person.
Excellent. Then I just had a comment, this came up at a CSBA, an attorney made this point. I guess at the beginning of every year, we do an assessment on the students to see how much they, for special ed students, how much progress they've lost over the summer. And their suggestion was to do all of your students because we're going to have a question as we come out of this about whether we were providing the free and appropriate education, whether what we offered our special ed students matched our general ed students. And that evaluating your general ed students gives you some support for if your, if your general ed students lost some traction and your special ed students lost the same traction, you're not as ugly as if you just look at the data that the special ed students lost some traction.
We already, we know that we're going to have to go back when we get, get back to somewhat kind of a normal school, school day, that we're going to have to look at whether our special ed students have, it's called regress. Do they have any regression based on their learning disability, what their goals are? And once we decide if that's occurred, if regression has occurred, then, then we need to, to work out a way to provide some support coming on the backend to remediate that. So we have to fill that gap. We can't just say, yeah, they, they kind of backslid a little bit, but, but whatever. We have to, we have to make sure we fill that gap. And so we got a plan in place when we get back and we're actually being really proactive with that. We had all of our teachers update all their present levels of performance, which means how is this student performing right now? If their IEP was in September, then we don't want to know how they were performing in September. We want to know how they were performing in March when we went on remote learning. So we had all of our case managers update present levels if the IEP was held from August to December. So now we have the most current present levels of performance, the most, where the student was at when we went on remote learning. So we think we are going to have a good handle on looking at regression with our special ed kids.
Excellent, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Benton Court? Okay, we're going to go on to number six. First reading of AR and BP 4218 dismissal, suspension disciplinary action, BP 4113.5 working remotely and BP 6157 distance learning. Nancy, will we be receiving these over online?
They were included in the board backup, but I'd be happy to send them to you. And we, as they're updated, they are added to the district website.
Oh, okay. I, I probably overlooked and I apologize. Look at them this week. Nancy, you don't need to send me any, I've rented them.
Okay.
Okay. Next are action items. Consent calendar, the consent calendar items are routine in nature and usually do not require board discussion. Individual items may be removed by board members and presented for discussion in separate actions. The consent calendar will be adopted by a roll call vote. Mr. Bizar?
Do we need a motion first? I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent counter.
All second.
Okay, so it was Tim and Paul. Sorry.
It's all right.
Okay, Mr. Bizar?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Snotterly?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace? Mr. Wallace? Oh, oh, I see. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Me, hold your thumb up.
Pass 5-0, thank you. Approved declaration of need for fully qualified educators 2020 to 2021. Mr. Bizar?
Sure, I'd make a motion that we approve that. Sure. I make a motion that we approve that.
Sorry, there we go.
And I second that motion.
Okay, Mr. Bizar?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Snodderly?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
And I vote aye, 5-0. A motion to approve resolution 19-20/12, grading during emergency school closures. Motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Who did first? Is that Rose?
I had Rose.
Okay, you had Rose?
No.
Okay, Mr. Bizar?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst? She says aye.
Hold on, hold on. I'm thinking, I'm contemplating.
Okay.
So...
I'll vote aye. I do have, you know, I just, I'll vote aye.
We had you down as making the motion. Would you like not to be the person that made the motion?
I'd like to not be the person who made the motion.
I seconded.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Vern made, I'll second.
Yeah, Vern.
Okay, and then Vern, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
And I vote aye, 5-0. Approved resolution 19-20/13, proclaiming staff appreciation week. I wish we could actually do this, I mean, together. Online, it's hard, but may I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bizar?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Snodderly?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
And I vote aye, pass 5-0. I have a copy of this, but... Well, there it goes. And Paul, I don't know, we gave Randy, I think, the right to sign off on it, even though it says secretary, the resolution.
Or Nancy, if you want me to come in and sign it, just let me know. I can come into your office and sign it.
Okay, I do believe it says Secretary of the Board, which is Mr. Phil Putt.
Yeah, that's Mr. Phil Putt.
Okay, that's right. Thank you. Okay, losing my pages. Okay, future, excuse me, future agenda items, the budget public hearing. Do we need, do you think we need a special meeting?
I thought we were going to have a special meeting to prioritize building.
That's what I thought. We have to set a date. Okay, set it.
I would recommend it be after the May revise comes out at least. I mean, we won't know everything, but we'll know more.
Right. What date is that, Carolyn? Is that the 28th?
Mr. Phil Putt, could you unmute yourself?
Do you want me to mute me?
No, Mr. Phil Putt.
Oh.
No, hey, look, here's the thing. The May revise is the end of this week. So we can do something, we don't, there's no urgency in selecting a date. We can do something as an emergency meeting if you want to. Between now and June, the next June meeting, to prioritize basically the items for a bond election. But I don't think there's any reason to do that right now and spend a lot of time. We can probably, I can individually email each one of you so we don't violate Brown Act to figure out what date might be best. And then we can kind of discuss what, at that point, we can have a meeting and discuss when we could, what prioritization of the bond issues we want to do.
Thank you. Is that, so we'll be getting an email from Mr. Phil Putt and see what happens between us, okay? Superintendent report, Mr. Phil Putt?
Well, I just want to, I mean, I'm not going to say a lot because a lot of things were said today. I appreciate so much what Lupe Robles reported on elementary and Justin Pruitt reported on secondary and Kim reported there. Also with what Carolyn reported on the budget, that's a tough message. We, you know, this is not a fun time because we are having to cut some things and kind of tighten the belt. The most important resolution you probably approved tonight was the staff appreciation. We've been recognizing staff actually since last week. But I think it's important that they know that you appreciate them so much because this has been a difficult time. The other thing I want to do is do a shout out actually to Matt Vargas and his crew for a lot of the maintenance work that they've been doing. And also, you know, we've continued on with a lot of the vendor kind of projects and stuff we've had. Obviously, Yolo classroom construction has been continuing on. Some things there, we're going to be painting on the inside of the cafeteria at Yolo very soon. Also, if you drive by the band room on Harden, you'll see that that has been recently slurry sealed and is going to be striped, I think, tomorrow. Much improved, really needed maintenance that is going to prolong the life of those areas and stuff. So even when, and their custodians are actually sanitizing and cleaning all the classrooms every day. I just got to tell you that things have not stopped educationally and maintenance-wise in your district. And that's to, you know, appreciation to your direction to me to continue that effort and stuff. And so thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Bizar, do you have anything to say?
No, I think we've had enough time.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes, I would like to say something. As a former educator at a different level, distance learning was coming in and I was going out because I was not technologically advanced enough, I didn't feel. And so what our teachers and our staff, and I mean all of our staff, I'm not going to differentiate in any way, all of our staff and the parents and the students, what they've all done to pull together in this nightmare has been absolutely amazing. I mean, I have my sign out front for the seniors, I didn't get one for the eighth grade because they were gone, but I'm just so supportive of what everyone's done and I just want to say kudos.
Thank you. Mr. Snodderly?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Mr. Wallace?
I just wanted to recognize the difficulty and the emotions that our students have had to go through, especially, you know, seniors and eighth graders, that these are important milestones in your life and they've kind of gotten left behind. And I'm glad to hear that we're doing all that we can and that we are to support them because it's tough. This is important milestones in the life that they're losing out on.
Thank you. And I'd like to say, I'd like to thank all my board members, all of the staff, Mr. Phil Putt. Because of us being as conservative as we have been, we're ahead of the curve for the rest, I think for the whole county, and I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you for dealing with me being the least technological person here. My computer is now at like a 45-degree angle. But thank you very much and I appreciate everything and we will make it through this. And our seniors will too. I think they'll be stronger and they're going to make it into the history books.
Yeah, let us know, I hope Justice is still there. Let us know with the seniors aside and what we can do to help.
Yes, thank you. Have a good night. Please be safe and stay healthy.
So I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Vern, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Coast? Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Bye, have a good night.
Okay.
Stay healthy.
Oh, yeah.